And the time is eight o'clock and the board has now reconvened in open session. We do not have any action on any closed session items. We have information coming up next and I'll, I think everyone knows, but I'll just say for purposes of being in front of the microphone that we are not doing the budget development staffing update tonight, which is item 5B. So if you're here for that, you can leave now. And, um, just saying. So, we're on 5A, which is the innovative school improvement plan. Dr. Dupree.
Thank you, Mrs. James. I'm going to ask everyone who's on the planning team for this program to please stand up. We have a lot of folks here. Now, I just want you to stay standing for a second. I want to tell the board kind of how we got here tonight. We kind of had a seed of an idea that came up in early January and we invited most of the folks you see standing to a room without many of the executive team members around. And we said, "Here's a seed of an idea. I give you two weeks to turn it into a full-blown plan." And they showed up two weeks later with a full-blown book like you received, virtually complete, with a strong PowerPoint. And then we upped the ante a little bit and said, "Now make this a full wraparound program." That goes, you know, goes all the way to the kids receiving dinner at the end of the day. And they went back for one more week and they came back with what they referred to as the Edge Plan, even had a logo, brand, and everything. But, um, but we're excited about this because I think it represents a new day in Fort Bend ISD. It's a big step forward for certain schools where the students need support in a big way. And it also represents a strong leadership focus by all the individuals you see standing. And I'm just really proud of their work and their effort on this because they have worked long and hard while doing their regular day-to-day work to develop this new plan because they all care about the students in our district. So you all can sit down and I'm going to turn it over to Anthony and Delacato, who's going to begin the presentation and he'll continue on with Dr. Faust and Dina Edgar also contributing. So, Anthony?
Well, good evening, President James, Board members, Dr. Dupree. We are very excited to be able to present to you tonight our Edge Plan. We'd like to start with talking about why. Why the Edge Plan and what is the purpose behind it? And this is all about our students. This is all about equity. This is about ensuring that some of our students most in need have the very best teacher in front of them, as well as all the services and supports that they need. So we know that we have some underperforming campuses here in Fort Bend. And our leadership team, as Dr. Dupree has mentioned, we've been doing some heavy lifting the past three weeks and have really worked on this plan. The one thing that has all of us so very excited is we had a number of departments, thirteen total, come together and really talk about what do our kids need? This is all about our students, what are their needs at some of our most underperforming campuses, and what can we do to make sure they are going to achieve their full potential and be successful? And so this plan is really about bringing significant positive change for our students. And so you, our school board, have helped lead us to this point, holding us accountable to make sure that all our schools are successful. And so, one thing we really enjoyed about creating this plan is that we're not tinkering around the edges. This is really about rebuilding the entire culture and climate of the school, as well as rebuilding the entire staff. So from the outset, we want to state that we are not by any means suggesting that there are no effective teachers and staff at these schools. Anyone that is interested in coming to Edge will have the opportunity to apply. And for staff either not interested in becoming a part of Edge, or they're not selected to be a part of the Edge program, they will still have a place here in our district. So all of our core beliefs and commitments are addressed in our Edge Plan. We have it very aligned with our mission, as well as our core beliefs and commitments. And this includes a commitment to provide an educational system that enables all students to achieve their full potential by recruiting and finding the very best teachers for these underperforming campuses, by intentionally rebuilding the climate at the campuses, by providing multiple leadership opportunities for teachers and staff, and lastly, by providing ongoing intentional support throughout the year for our staff, our community, and grade-level teams of teachers. So our mission here in Fort Bend is that we exist to inspire and equip all students to pursue futures beyond what they can imagine. And so, our traditional instructional support model has not been sufficient to adequately close achievement gaps at some campuses. And students at these campuses are not reaching their full potential. And again, that's what has our team so excited, is that we're able to really look at an entire comprehensive program to make sure we help these students succeed. These campuses require an entirely different instructional support model. We need to do something big, something different, and we do feel that the time is now. So our plan tonight is going to address how we'll make meaningful change at some of our elementary campuses in the greatest need to help us achieve our district mission. Everything you see and hear tonight is a plan that we continue to solidify and refine. We have identified a list of campuses through various data points to determine the elementary campuses with the greatest need that we feel will most benefit from Edge. As Dr. Dupree mentioned, you have your program guide in hand that we'll be referencing throughout tonight's presentation. And again, from all the individuals that stood up, we had a very comprehensive collaborative process by a cross-functional team consisting of thirteen departments, which include accountability, business and finance, campus leadership, child nutrition, community relations, curriculum and instruction, extended learning, human resources, our legal department, our program management office, school leadership, special programs, and teacher development. So our Fort Bend mission drives what we do. And as we worked on this Edge Plan, we've made sure that our Edge model is aligned to our mission, our vision, our core beliefs and commitments, and our best practices. And by best practices, this includes professional learning communities, data disaggregation, differentiated instruction, and a robust measure of success. So this graphic shows the intentionality of our program design. Each point of the star here has a specific process. We'll start with strategy at the top. And again, this Edge program does align with our district mission, vision, tightly-held expectations, core beliefs and commitments. So we are aligned with our focus. Then moving clockwise, we have our structure. You'll hear tonight how we have reporting relationships clearly outlined, the division of work, and the roles and responsibilities. Then for the process, there are specific management processes in terms of how decisions are made, business processes in terms of a very specific way we're going to find the very best teachers for these campuses, and a process as well regarding data disaggregation, how we intervene to support our kids. Then we move on to rewards. There's the compensation, recognition, and incentives piece, again, to attract the very best talent at these particular campuses. And then there's the people's piece, the skills, the selection, the development, and the overall performance management. So now I'm going to transition to Dr. Faust and he's going to present the curriculum and instruction component of our plan.
Thank you. So I'd like to start by talking about tinkering around the edges, which this is not. As I talk about the instructional redesign, it's a dramatic change and a dramatically different and innovative approach to meeting our students' needs. I wanted to define for you the roles in this program design. Each grade level will have a master teacher, a mentor teacher, and an edge teacher, at least one of each of the mentor and edge, and an edge instructional aide. So each grade-level team will have that structure. And I wanted to find for you the roles and responsibilities, or some of the responsibilities for each of these levels of teacher. The master teacher, they're someone that has proven success with students, that they really have mastered their content area, and that they have the ability to coach and inspire other adults. So that would be the master teacher. They're responsible for a number of different things, but one of them would be leading the grade-level PLCs, those professional learning communities that Dr. Delacato referred to. They would also be responsible for facilitating the development of engaging, aligned instruction that is differentiated to meet the needs of all of their students. They would also be responsible for analyzing student data and making data-informed decisions to modify instruction. They would be responsible for organizing the flexible grouping, and I'm going to talk more about that in a slide or so, and for facilitating the development of enrichment and intervention activities. They would provide peer coaching, mentoring, and modeling for other teachers on the team. And the master teacher would provide ongoing embedded professional development to continue to meet the instructional needs of the students that they serve. The greatest thing is that the master teacher, and I'll show you some models in just a second, is an ongoing resource for every student on that grade-level team. They will serve not just the students that they host in their homeroom class, but at various times, all of the students and meet various needs of the students on their team. So that's the master teacher. The mentor teacher in this model is someone that will support the efforts of the master teacher. They also have a proven track record with students, and they've shown that they have capacity to develop their leadership skills and to mentor and lead others. They'll provide high-quality, aligned, engaging instruction. They'll also work with small groups of students and they'll facilitate the flexible grouping process. They'll serve as a campus liaison for instructional resources and aligning those instructional resources. And they'll also be responsible for analyzing student data and making instructional adjustments. So they will facilitate and support the PLCs along with the lead of the master teacher, and they'll help serve the needs of all the various students. Our edge teacher is that teacher that has shown high capacity, a potential, a tremendous potential for growth. So our edge teacher would be served by the mentor and the master teacher through modeling and through coaching. They'll also provide aligned instruction, and they're expected to be an active participant in the PLC process. They'll also make or monitor the progress of their students and make instructional adjustments to meet the needs of their students. So the key thing about this model is it's a focus on adult growth, but it's also a focus on student growth, and as Dr. Delacato mentioned, maximizing the potential of every So I want to talk about our traditional grouping with students. Traditionally, we have one teacher that has twenty-two homeroom students and they serve those students. Occasionally, we have blocking where they'll flip students and you'll have teachers in content areas and they'll switch a group of students. Sometimes we even have three-way rotations on our upper grade levels. But this is the traditional grouping model. We feel one of the advantages of the Edge program and having a master teacher on your team and a group of mentor teachers on the team, we have the opportunity to flexibly group students in different ways to meet their needs. So, in these graphics that you see, in the first one on the left, students can be grouped by competency level based on a particular learning objective. For example, the master teacher could first serve students that are functioning below grade level, whereas a mentor teacher, and there may be one or two, depending on the number of teachers on the team, can serve students at grade level. Whereas the edge teacher would be a teacher that would serve students that are above grade level. And again, you can rotate that at different times, but it's serving students and moving students around the grade level based on their competency. At other times, the teachers may serve students based on a departmentalized or by subject. If the master teacher is particularly strong in serving students in math instruction, I'm sorry, the master teacher, yes, in math instruction, then she could start by all the students rotating into their class for math instruction, while the mentor teachers service ELA and science, and the edge teacher could service the social studies and health. And again, those could be rotated. So just another potential for flexible grouping. Also, we could flexibly group students by their learning styles. We can differentiate by the learning styles, and the master teacher, that person that's really mastered pedagogy and student engagement, can start with the tactile kinesthetic learners and design those tactile kinesthetic lessons. Where the mentor teachers could serve the visual, or students that have been identified as mixed learning styles, and the edge teacher could start with the auditory. And again, note the arrows, that we can move those around based on student needs. Another thing that's noted up there is that we can differentiate for students or flexibly group in this Edge model based on student interest. So we can extend student choice, and the master teacher can serve certain group of students that have a certain student choice, and we can give them opportunities to decide what project they want to engage in in order to meet the learning objective. So it's just another way that we can flexibly group our students. As far as the coaching model, I mentioned peer coaching, I mentioned coaching and modeling a little bit earlier. That master teacher on the grade-level team, on each of the grade-level teams, will have opportunities or times in the day when they push their students out. So it may be that they push all their students to one mentor teacher. And I mentioned earlier the instructional aide on this team. The instructional aide would support that mentor teacher that now has a larger class load. And the master teacher can go out for various functions, and I'll share some information on that in another slide. Another way that we could push the students out is the master teacher's homeroom students could be pushed out and distributed evenly, or in certain portions to other teachers on the team, such as the mentor teacher and the edge teacher. And again, that instructional aide could support the teacher that has additional students. So what the teacher, the master teacher would be doing when they had their students pushed out is they could be going into one of the classes and co-teaching, meaning there's a larger group of students, but now there's two teachers, a master teacher and a mentor teacher, both excellent teachers. The master teacher and the edge, there's various combinations, so they could be co-teaching with larger groups of students. They could also rotate, and as one teacher has a larger group of students and an instructional aide, the master teacher could go in and model instruction with support from the other two adults. They could also perform observations and provide formal feedback. So they can observe, provide feedback, again, to the mentor teacher, to the edge teacher. There's a number of different ways that it can function. There are also times, and if you noticed in the sample schedule that was in your packet, I believe it was page thirty-four, there are also times when the master teacher, that best instructional teacher on the team, will receive intervention groups. In other words, grade-level teachers will send out their students from their class that need support, in small numbers generally, and they'll go to the master teacher and the master teacher will intervene or support those students with their particular skill sets. So that's another mode or method that we can use the skills of the master teacher. So, all students on a grade-level team will be served, not just your general ed students, but through the Edge model, will serve our special education students, get-in-town students, which are serviced under special ed, our bilingual students, and the RTI process as well. I'd like to talk a little bit about our special education edge continuum of services. So, the first graphic you see on the far left, external support, is when a student's in a class and they have accommodations, but they don't need additional support. There's not a co-teach or in-class support, specialized support for those students. Each grade, I'm sorry, each campus will have a special education edge team. So that's a team of special ed teachers, a mentor teacher, an edge teacher, depending on the number of special ed teachers, special ed teachers, and of course, a master special ed teacher. So this master special ed teacher will support the other special ed teachers, the edge teacher and the mentor teacher, and they can be used in a number of different ways. For those external support, those gen ed classes where there's accommodations only, the master teacher can oversee and support the special ed mentor teacher or edge teacher, and they're communicating with the general ed teacher to make sure those accommodations are provided. In the collaborative support portion of the model, our continuum of services, the special ed edge teacher can support the co-teach, and they can go in and actually be another adult to co-teach in a model of general ed students with special ed students included. Also, in the in-class support, it's very similar. The special ed master teacher will go in and support and help grow the edge special ed teacher and the mentor special ed teacher. But also, something that's great about this model is the sped master teacher can be used to intervene for students in small groups. They can pull special education students out of the gen ed class temporarily, but they can also pull gen ed students with that small group of special ed students, close those gaps in real time, and then push them right back into the gen ed setting. They can also provide support, if you look at the far-right graphic, to special ed students who receive specialized support. So this is a continuum of services in the Edge model where special ed will be supported, and again, a special ed master teacher, a team of K-five special ed teachers working together, the very best that we have, working with these students. Now, this grade-level staffing model I've referenced, this is based, this is how we would staff each grade-level team at a campus based on the number of teachers on that grade level. So the core content staffing model, if you look in the top-left corner graphic or that chart, depending on the number of teachers, you would have a master teacher, at least one mentor level teacher, and one edge teacher, and at least one instructional aide. If you got up to five teachers on a grade-level team, you would have a master teacher, two mentor level teachers, two edge teachers, and then of course, an instructional aide. In the special education staffing model that I was talking about on the previous slide, it's a similar model. You would have at least one master teacher, and that would service all of the grade levels, a mentor teacher at each grade level, depending on the number of teachers, and edge teacher. So special ed ARDs will determine how many teachers are required based on the services, and also how many instructional aides are provided. That'll be based or determined in ARD on what services are provided. I mentioned gifted and talented a little bit earlier. In the state of Texas, students who are identified as GT are required to be serviced in the course that they are qualified as gifted and talented by a teacher that's been trained in gifted and talented skills, I guess you would say, services. So there's an initial thirty hours of training that's required by the state, as well as an annual six-hour follow-up of training to meet the needs of these students and to serve these students. Any student on these identified campuses that we place the Edge model will be served. Their GT needs will be met on each of these grade-level teams by a GT, I don't want to use the word certified, but qualified or trained teacher. So that will take place. Also, wanted to talk about bilingual staffing and the staffing model and how we'll support the bilingual students. If you look at the bottom-left graphic where it says bilingual staffing model, we split it into K-2 and 3-5. And just to speak briefly on that, we'll staff at least one master teacher on the K-2 model for our bilingual teacher, so one master bilingual teacher, and we'll have at least one mentor teacher. And again, it depends on the number of bilingual teachers that we have at each grade level, and one edge teacher. So, K-2 will have a cadre of master, mentor, edge teachers, and they'll serve the bilingual students. Now, because our K-2 bilingual students are developing their language skills, there may be flexible grouping within the grade level between those teachers, but we would not intend to flexible group them with the general ed students. However, on grades three through five, we'll have two master teachers in grades three through five, and at least one mentor and edge teacher for those grade levels, again, based on the number of teachers at the grade level. And we do intend to flexibility group the three-through-five bilingual students with general ed students. So they will flow with the other students. And that bilingual master teacher will also be a resource for both the bilingual students and the gen ed students in the Edge model. So next, we want to talk about another exciting piece, and it's in the Edge model, meeting the needs of the whole child. And Dr. Dupree mentioned that a little bit earlier in the introduction. I want to direct your eyes to, first, the wraparound piece of this graphic, where the family is working and the parents are working in conjunction with the school, the community's working with the school, and our parent educator, who's our resource on campus, is working together to wrap around services for the child and for the family in this model. Now direct your eyes to the daily physical activity, top-right corner of that graphic that's in red. We intend, and you should have received a sample student schedule in a handout that was just sent around, and you may have also received it in a recent update that went out, but a sample student schedule addresses the need for daily physical activity in this model. So another innovative approach to the Edge model is that we want to ensure that students have brain breaks. I would say, "An active body is an active mind," is one way I would phrase that, or movement facilitates cognition. So built into this sample student schedule is two recesses and a thirty-minute daily physical education, which would include something that we're calling Brain Lab. So it may be that they go to Brain Lab, I shouldn't say it maybe, they will go to PE daily, and Brain Lab will be one of those breaks, one of those cycles during the week. So it is activity-based learning, or ABL is the phrase it's called, will be employed, and we will align the grade-level activities and content with the activity-based learning that's going on in this rotation. So that is the planning and the intent. And again, we're focusing in this model just on that daily physical activity piece of improving student wellness overall, and engaging students and giving them these physical breaks in their day so that they can go back and focus on their student learning, but also that movement facilitating cognition. So thirty minutes of PE or Brain Lab, thirty minutes of recess. And that thirty minutes of recess would be daily, generally broken into two groups if you look at the sample student schedule. The other wraparound services that we would provide are, and I'll start from the bottom-left corner, after-school, extending the day, and having homework/tutorials. And I say slash tutorials because I'm thinking it could be enrichment, it could be tutorials that are meeting a specific need of that student, interventions, and that would be for a certain period of time after school, and that snack, we've got to feed them. Then, daily physical activity, that applied to during the school day, but it would also apply to activity after the school day. They would be given options and opportunities at different physical activities after the school day. They would also be given time for either an academic or enrichment activity, or access to club activities. And all of that would happen after the school day, and again, you look at that sample student schedule to show you some times for each of those activities. And then they would close their day with a dinner, and then there would be dismissal. So this is what we call Club Edge and Wraparound Services for meeting the needs of the whole child. And again, I highlight what's around the Edge, that parent educator and the connection to the family and the parents and the community. So the parent educator would be a full-time position in the Edge model, and there'd be a number of different activities that they would engage in. Family Stories is a multicultural literacy program that we would use, and it's a reading program with students and parents. Also, the parent educator could offer or would offer adult classes for parents that need support with English as a second language, for parents that seek GED, GED, or pursuing a GED, for literacy services, for people that just need to grow in their literacy. Also, the parent educator would lead PACT, which is Parent and Child Together. This is where the parent educator provides the parent with resources on how to help their student learn, how they can work with their child in literacy, how they can use instructional strategies at home to ensure that their student has understanding. So that's PACT. We would also offer parenting classes. The parent educator would offer various parenting classes, like how to deal with young adults and their cognitive abilities and their learning styles. We would partner with outside agencies such as the Fort Bend Literacy Council to help us provide these services. And we would ask from each of our parents a pledge that they would engage in this wraparound process with us so that we could meet the needs of our students, also meet the needs of the families, and have a profound impact on the community of these schools.
Okay, so for this graphic, it outlines instructional support, but before I go into detail on that, if you'll notice at the very top, everything is aligned and focusing up on our students. The students are there at the top of this model, and that's intentional. So we realize that the research frequently shows the largest indicator of student achievement is the quality of the teacher in the classroom. And even though we will be hiring the very best teachers through a very robust hiring process, we realize that we still need to continue to grow these teachers, as well as their leadership abilities as well. So, the bottom row shows various departments here in Fort Bend that would be supporting our teachers and providing training. But again, so that it is very intentional and very prescriptive in its approach, everything would funnel through our Department of Teacher Development, and then we would have a lead master teacher for the district, and that master teacher for the district, and that individual would then funnel out the trainings to the teachers. And again, it would be very specific. Sometimes, the trainings would be more for pre-K through second grade, other times, it may be third through fifth, sometimes, it could be the full range. So, again, this is a very intentional and prescriptive way to provide the ongoing support throughout the school year, and not just the beginning of the year, but throughout the school year to help make sure these teachers continue to grow and our students reap the Also, teachers will be receiving all of the Fort Bend District professional development that every other teacher receives, but in addition, they'll receive ongoing support and training throughout the entire year. So, this graphic, this slide contains two graphics. On the left-hand side focuses on the culture of climate and achievement in the FIT model. And FIT, the FIT acronym stands for Framework for Intentional and Targeted Teaching. And so, on the left, you see the five pillars, and that is a very intentional focus for defining a culture of achievement. This would be throughout the entire school year, but it is a very specific focus for the entire first week of school. And so, as we work to bring the staff together, the students, to again, rebuild this climate and culture, focusing on student achievement, it culminates with a very powerful community presentation at the end of the first week of school. And again, that's not just for the first week, it's throughout the school year, but it's a very intentional focus to start the school year, again, rebuilding that culture. The graphic on the right talks about a very specific focus of FIT teaching, which includes establishing purpose, a gradual release of responsibility, informative and summative assessments. So, you'll see the teacher icon at the top, begins with very focused and intentional planning, where they model, then it goes into we as a class with guided instruction, then it goes into collaborative learning, whether they're in pairs or triads, and as the students' confidence builds and they become familiar with what's being expected of them, then they're able to do it independently. And so, it's a gradual release model, which is also occurring right now across Fort Bend, but this is even more intentional with a stronger emphasis and will happen even more frequently. It's also important to note that Edge schools will be following the Fort Bend curriculum. Therefore, we want the major assessments to be consistent across the district. It's important to note that the environment, though, will be different, as Dr. Faust talked about all the flexible groupings, which are possible, and the nature of the classroom should lend a more frequent check for understanding and fluid grouping. As part of one of the board's priorities, the assessment planning team has been evaluating current practice and is considering best options to assess student progress, and this team will be sharing its recommendations with you in May. Our Edge schools will participate in the assessments recommended for all Fort Bend elementary schools, but they may also be given additional opportunities to pilot other assessment tools or processes. So, again, this is focusing on the left side, rebuilding that culture and climate and making that a very specific intentional focus at the start of the year with that end-of-the-first-week community involvement piece, and then, a very specific instructional approach while still using our district curriculum. So, page 22 in your program guide shows a more thorough outline of this slide. This is just a portion. The intent here is just to outline the typical assessments that we give in a chronological fashion at the beginning of the year and throughout. It lists the specific assessment. It also shows the data reports using EdgeEuphoria, Aware, and other systems. And then, to show the follow-through, it's also this very specific PLC actions that grade level teams would take, and then, the adult response. You'll notice in the right-hand column that oftentimes, our master teacher is taking the lead in coordinating this PLC. And again, remember, this master teacher is just that, they are a master teacher that has strengths and proven success, not just in teaching students, but in also leading adults. And so, they are a very key person on each grade level team, coordinating and leading this process, though everyone does have ownership. Edge campuses will not be giving a significant increase in the number of assessments, it's just using that data even more powerful in an even more intentional, strategic way to make sure our students reap the benefits. So, again, this is a draft calendar, and again, it can be adjusted based on what the assessment committee comes back with. So, there's a lot of intentionality in this Edge program, and we want to achieve the best for our kids and achieve our district's mission. And so, it's very important as well to have specific measures of effectiveness, because we need to know, start with the end in mind, what is it we expect to achieve? And so, you have a table on page 21, which outlines how we will determine the effectiveness of the model. We'll use a variety of metrics, some listed here towards the bottom. We'll use those provided by ERG, our Education Resource Group that we work with. And there's a couple of different types of data, qualitative and quantitative. Qualitative, we have walkthrough data, as well as stakeholder surveys, which includes the Edge faculty and staff, students, and parents. And then, quantitative data, there's the student assessment data, the star progress measure, ERG, Achievement Index data, and Performance Index data. And it's important to note that as we continue to refine and solidify our plan, that we will be establishing SMART goals for the program in collaboration with our leadership team to determine the measurable goals. Okay, so, the best talent, that is critical for the success of this program. As a result, we have unique positions, our master teacher, mentor teacher, as the graphics that Dr. Faust went over, interventionist, again, stipends with increased responsibilities, leadership development at multiple levels, which again, is one of our core competencies. Again, to be sure, we hire the very best people for our Edge campuses. There will be a multi-level selection process to ensure we make the very best hires, and our Human Resources Department is also working on ensuring we have the very best substitute teachers at this campus when the teachers are out. So, our plan is, again, that all the staff at the selected campuses will have to reapply. This will ensure we have the very best talent with the best skill sets and performance. We want to again emphasize, this is not a RIF at any level. Staff that apply to be at an Edge campus but are not selected, or staff that choose not to be a part of the Edge program will be reassigned based on district needs. So, again, our Edge program, it's innovative, it provides unique learning opportunities for students and staff, and ultimately, it again, is all about our kids. It's designed to result in academic reform, rebuilding the culture and climate, and student achievement. So, now, I'm going to turn it over to Deana to talk about the finance process.
Good evening. Okay, so, we're going to take a look at the proposed Edge stipend schedule, or we can call it the reward schedule. We've identified the funding source in the column to the right. So, beginning with the master teacher, they'll receive a stipend of $15,000, which will cover the increased responsibilities and the additional professional development days in the summer. Mentor teachers will receive a $9,000 stipend, and that equates to about $1,000 a month during the school year. The bilingual teacher will receive an additional $1,000, so the overall would be a $10,000 stipend, and that's in lieu of the $4,000 bilingual stipend they would otherwise have received. We will be requiring an LPC certification, which is a Licensed Professional Counselor, and they will also receive a stipend of $9,000 for that highly qualified status. We would like to offer the principal a $3,000 signing bonus to attract and hire the best-in-class talent. And Edge teachers will earn a retention bonus of $1,500, and that's every year, plus an additional $500 for three extra days in the summer, and that will not be delivered as a stipend, but it'll be through supplemental pay. So, on page 42 of your Edge program guide, we've modeled a sample of one large elementary with a robust bilingual and pre-K program, and then, one smaller campus with no bilingual program. The cost schedule for the two modeled campuses totals about $150,000. This includes $562,000 out of the general fund and 288 out of grant funds. Title I would be picking up the master teacher stipends. IDEA will cover master stipends for special education, and Title III can pick up the master stipends for the bilingual. Okay, so additionally, we're requesting seven FTEs to support the Edge learning model at two campuses. We're requesting two master teachers for special education, a parent educator at each campus, and that'll come out of title funds, an additional PE at each campus to facilitate that daily physical activity, and one district-level lead master teacher that will also assist teacher development throughout the year in the regular district-wide activities. The cost of the seven positions is $340,000 to the general fund, with $90,000 to Title I. The total cost of the Edge program to the general fund is approximately $1.1 million. And we are requesting consideration and approval of the Edge program positions and stipends at the March 7th Board Meeting. And that's in order to facilitate staffing and hiring. Okay, this next slide models the two campuses described earlier to highlight the general fund impact. The top gray section is the current campus general fund budget, and it's separated by payroll and operating. So, if you look at Elementary School I has a current budget of almost $4 million. Adding the Edge program at a cost of $550,000 would increase the total general fund budget to about $4.5 million. At Elementary School II, the current budget of $2.6 million, adding Edge at $483,000 increases the general fund to about $3 million. So, again, the total impact to the general fund is $1.1 million, and that's when you add in that lead, that lead master at the district level. So, you're seeing 1.02 here, but if you add that $84,000 lead master, it comes up to $1.1 million. The cost for Club Edge is captured at the bottom gray section, and this is for that wraparound service. It's an additional $1 million, however, we're pursuing alternate means of funding sources for the Club Edge, and we're looking at grants, we're looking at corporate sponsors, volunteers. There's a lot of different things that we can do to assist in the funding of that so that it minimizes the impact to the general fund, or even possibly eliminates it.
So, it's appropriate we conclude our presentation with a picture of a student, because that's what this program is all about. We do realize that it is critical that we effectively and accurately communicate our Edge program to our community, and so, we have a comprehensive communication plan. It starts with targeted communications and key messages for both internal and external stakeholders. Internal, because certainly, the communities that will be impacted, as well as the staff, need to understand why we're doing what we're doing and to know if they want to be a part of Edge. Also, for our district at large, there are plenty of amazing teachers who might be interested in participating in Edge, as well as externally, there could be, there could be, there is certainly great talent out there that would hopefully want to be a part of this. We also have been developing our Edge branding and marketing campaign, continuous staff, parent, and community engagement, this will be ongoing, it's not just a beginning of this process, this is ongoing in terms of the communications. And of course, all various communication tools and tactics will be utilized. So, you've been very patient listening to the presentation, we're sure you have questions. So, at this time, we like to entertain any questions you have. We do have department experts seated off to your left that can also help answer specific questions you have.
Thank you, Dr. Delacato, and Dr. Faust, it was a very nice presentation, very exciting to hear. Exciting, innovative plan that's using all our resources in our district and using them in a fresh way, and that's really exciting. So, that's what I heard. So, I know we have some questions or comments. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you very much for an excellent report. So, you kind of said some of the words that I was going to use. One of the things I like about this is that you're piloting it rather than expanding this to however many schools it'll be eventually used at, if successful. I like all the activity and the physical education. I know when I was in elementary school, for the first few years, we had three recesses every day, and I think I turned out okay, I don't know. You know, it's a big plan, it is innovative. It seems like pieces of these things have been tried, but nothing that incorporates the whole package. And so, I think, again, if successful, then I think it will be a model that a lot of school districts will look to. As far as some of my questions, I'll just stick to the financing part, because I think other people probably bring up other things. So, basically, just to clarify, for these two schools, which I assume that you have some idea of what they, of which schools they are with the specific information here. So, we're looking at basically an additional $1.1 million on the general fund for these two schools.
That's correct.
Okay, so, and that's, that could be less if you get volunteers for the Club Edge, maybe some grants, maybe?
That does not include Club Edge. The 1.1 is just pure, the stipends, the new positions, and some operating costs. Club Edge would be an additional million.
Okay.
And that's where we're seeking funds, grants, and...
Okay, so then, basically, it's $2 million.
Correct.
Right, for two schools?
Yes, sir.
2.1, something like that. So, how many schools do you think eventually, if, again, if successful, would you, how big do you think this could be?
Well, I think just based on our efforts to this point, I think we've identified roughly, probably 10 schools, I think, that we believe could benefit from the program. So, we've tried to design this with sustainability in mind, and that's why, you know, I think you acknowledge the pilot piece. So, we are definitely looking for the grant funding, and I think there's a lot of money out there, especially for the Club Edge piece, probably long-term for all of these schools. But then, the other piece, the stipends and those kinds of things, we do have title funding available that could be used for sustainability, but we're also applying for a grant, for example, we've been talking to the George Foundation to help locally even offset some of the initial pilot cost for next year. So, they're looking at that kind of assistance as well. But I think that the bigger picture, I just, I want to, I guess, get to the bigger point on the money, is we believe a million dollars to do something like this at two schools is well-spent, because obviously, what we've been doing in those schools has not been effective. And so, sometimes, true equity means you provide what is needed, not, and that's not equal, that you give those students and that community what they need, and we believe this is a program that's needed in some of our schools, that the community needs to help really raise the performance and just the climate in the community, to really make the students feel good and positive, the staff at those schools, and the parents in the community, that they can, again, feel good about their schools and their performance. And especially with the new A through F ranking, ratings coming, we want to get ahead of this and be, get the ball, the train on the tracks now. So, I think, even if we can find alternative funding, we're willing to reallocate funds within the budget to make this happen.
Okay, yeah, and I'm not arguing against it, I'm just trying to clarify, you know, how much we're spending.
I did not hear arguments.
Right. And, okay, so, does this mean some of the, you know, because we, I think you and I talked about this a couple of weeks ago, but several years back now, we had this big discussion, all the helping teachers and whatnot, and we have a lot of them in the district. And does this mean that maybe you can, some of your savings might come from a reduction in some of those numbers, or at least a reallocation?
Well, that's really kind of a separate issue. We're, they're on the other side of the house, we're looking at a coaching model that would be a campus-based coaching model, as opposed to a district-level coaching model, as we've done in the past. So, you haven't heard about that yet, we're still developing that for next year, but we're not planning to add any more positions for that, but to use some of the positions we currently have, because we believe this is... Because we believe this is an intensive model for these schools, but we need, every one of our elementary schools, the principals' biggest request is always for coaches in literacy, science, and mathematics. So we really want to begin to build that robust model for other schools that would never participate in the Edge program.
Okay. All right, well, thank you all.
Mr. Rice.
Well, thank you. It was a very good presentation. I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions. You talked about disaggregating data. Who is going to do that? Are we going to do that internally? Are we collaborating with the Fort Bend Regional P-16 Council? Do you know?
Sure. Obviously, our Department of Accountability, led by Megan Evans, certainly would have a role in that. There would be reports that could be run through Edge Euphoria, AWAR, and other, other components, as well as our ITI with Michael Ewing. So there would be certainly district support, that earlier graphic where we had kind of stair steps leading up to the students. Our department would, would support our teachers, our Edge master teachers in that process. There was a slide that Dr. Faust presented. We'd like to have that partnership with KP-16 grow as well. But it would definitely be a coordinated effort. Again, we, we realize we're, we want to hire the very best teachers, but we're not going to also make assumptions that they have it all figured out as well. We're going to give them ongoing support throughout the year. The nice thing about the flexible grouping model is, once that data, reports have been run and disaggregated, there's a multitude of ways then to, to best intervene and reach the students, whether it's a small group going to the master teacher that they're not normally maybe taught by that individual every day, or the master teacher going in and coaching, the Edge teacher, there's just a number of options, once that data's broken down, that we're real excited about.
Anthony, Mr. Rice, I would add, I think, one of the things, I know you've, you've lived a few years on the board now and heading into your third term soon. So you've kind of lived the data teams and the PCG in a lot of those years. Anthony's referred to data disaggregation and the use of Edge Euphoria. Edge Euphoria, as you may remember, is a system the board approved for us to use that as our new student data system, which is really designed to be used in the classroom at the teacher level. PCG was not always that easy to use, but Edge Euphoria is very user-friendly, and our principals are already using it, and many of our teachers are using it. So in this context, when we're speaking of data disaggregation, it truly is real-time, every day, every week, the teachers can pull their data on their kids based on recent formative assessments that they're doing in the classroom, so they can inform their instruction in real-time.
Thank you. Who, Dr. Andalacato, who's going to be in charge of this program? Who's going to be responsible for overseeing it and for how long?
The Edge program overall?
Yeah.
It would be very multifaceted and kind of multi-owned.
So it's going to start in August of this year?
That is the plan.
Fall term?
Yes, sir. Well, it would start earlier than that in terms of certainly the selection of teachers and what have you, but in terms of which school year it would be for next school year.
So who's going to be in charge of running it and making sure it's successful?
Well, again, I think that, that's going to be multi, involving many departments. It would involve the assistant superintendents that support those schools, the chief academic officer, certainly human resources. There'd be communications would have their role as well. We mentioned Ms. Dr. Evans and the Department of Accountability. So it'd definitely be supported throughout. It'd be the teacher, Department of Teacher Development. So it's not any one person?
Yes, sir. It is one person, I'm sorry. All of the departments have to go to, the buck has to stop somewhere, and we did talk about this today, in E-team specifically, and it does stop with the chief academic officer, and I am accountable.
Okay. And then the $2 million, Dina, that covers, it looks like we've got 10 hours of a 10-hour day here.
Yes, that's correct.
And, and that's going to cover it, the $2 million for, for two campuses.
Correct.
It'll cover it for the school year.
Well, after the, the campus day ends, Club Edge would, would kick in. So they, the, the teachers would go home, and then the kids would go to Club Edge, and it's a different set of staff.
Different staff? Okay. Who, what staff is it? Is that the parents that you were talking about coming in?
No, it's part of the extended learning program, but we're calling it Club Edge because it's going to be a lot more robust. So Kathleen Collins actually would be leading that endeavor for us.
Okay. Who, I'm sorry, who'd you say?
Kathleen Collins.
Okay. All right. Well, it seems like a very bold initiative, and I look forward to supporting it and seeing the results. I guess we'll pilot it for next year and see how it works. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to stand up and applaud, really, because I'm very, very, very excited to see it. I think these, there are struggling schools, or underperforming schools have been on all of our minds quite a bit, especially with the upcoming, as Dr. Dupree pointed out, A through F rankings coming. And so I was very excited to see this program be rolled out. I was very excited to get my binder, which I read with glee, and I want to say thank you to everyone in this room and anyone who's not in this room that worked on this program because I, it seems to be very innovative, it seems to be thought through pretty well. And so I'm excited to see how it's going to pilot next year and to see how we might, could expand that in the future. I'm sure there'll be tweaking going on as there is with any program, but I applaud you guys for your work and for taking this seriously and for looking for innovative ways to approach teaching and learning for our students that might be struggling a little bit more than the other ones. So I just wanted to say that at the outset because I really was very excited to see it. So thank you guys for that. I too had the question about the program manager, so thank you for that response. Who was, I agree that fair is not always equal, and take it from my mom, who understands that fair is not always equal. So, and I too thought that I believe spending a million dollars to help, you know, help these kids reach their full potential is worth it. So, and I had some of the same questions that Mr. Rosenthal had, so I appreciate him asking those, but I agree that it's worth it. My two questions are, as I think about expansion, and have we thought about if we see some of these concepts that are successful with our students, have we thought about using those in our other elementary schools where we perhaps don't have, where we perhaps have segments of population, populations of students that are struggling or that we see some of these, some of these interventions could be used to help them be successful?
Well, I think with, like you'd mentioned, there'll be tweaking along the way, and so we want to try and, even though it's a well-thought-out plan, we have to see it in use and then learn from that and figure out what, you know, what works really well, what needs to be tweaked. We would certainly like to expand it, as Dr. Dupree said. We have more than just a couple campuses that we feel would benefit from Edge. So I think it's really looking at how it works the first year, and then looking at all the other dynamics from a staffing end, a financing end, what, where the needs are, where the data has changed, and, and see how we can expand it out. But that certainly is the intent, is to be able to scale it out more.
I think I also heard in that question, could we pull components of this plan and implement them? And I think the answer is yes. I mean, I think any school could almost adopt the flexible grouping of the mindset.
Right, and that's what I...
That all teachers on a grade level belong to all the kids and vice versa. So yes, I think we would definitely look at that.
Okay, good. Yeah, and that was really more what I was thinking about, is less the staffing, but I think we've learned that flexible grouping works really well, especially kids in the younger grades. And I've seen some of that done at some of our campuses, but usually it's principal-led, but I can see that potentially being used throughout. So my second question is, have we thought about middle school and high school? Or do, do we expect this program to help improve the, our middle schools and high schools that have struggling students, which I assume they, you know, if we start younger, obviously we're going to help those students achieve more success as they, as they progress. But have we thought about ways to use perhaps some of this at the middle school and high school level if we do continue to have students that struggle, or is that for future, something we're going to look at in the future?
Well, our, our focus in creating this plan has been on elementary. You're certainly right in that the earlier we can intervene, the better, just from a student confidence standpoint and their performance. And over time, that would then help when they get to middle school, they'd be that much more prepared and help the middle school out. Of course, there's, there's aspects of Edge that are already being used in our district. We give training on differentiated instruction and flexible grouping, and that would continue for the immediate future. Our focus has been on the elementary campuses.
So the main purpose for that question, obviously, is that we have a struggling middle school right now, and as we're looking to those rankings that are coming up quicker than we would like, what are we thinking about for McAuliffe and for helping, for helping that school, those teachers, those kids that really need some of these interventions as well?
That's a good question. I think we'd have to look at doing needs assessment and see where they stand, and I think look really at, at this point, what, what are some things that are working that we can further do to support McAuliffe? But again, our focus for the Edge has really been at the elementary level.
Okay.
Let me just, I think the, the answer is we're, we're absolutely looking at more things. You know, I think this is a model that could be adapted for middle school, but again, with the idea of piloting it at the elementary. I don't think we're going to want to rush into that next year, but we are looking at things at McAuliffe that are, you know, working with the principal, so she's not here tonight, and that's her responsibility with her same conversations we're having about, I'm different after-school support. You know, Willeridge has kind of been the same, Peter Patter, the same mindset. How do we, the biggest theme we keep hearing is the children need more opportunity, they need more co-curricular, more after-school kinds of things at both of those schools to really engage them in the learning environment. So we're working with both of those principals for additional enrichment, learning, and clubs, and things like that. They would, and we're also looking at both of them potentially, maybe modifying the schedule somewhat to build more into the day, more enrichment and things like that into the day as well. We're not as far along on that right now. We've spent a lot of energy on this, but we are having those conversations.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just, I just wanted to ask that question because I do know we have middle school and high school that are struggling. I just don't want to lose them in the process, and, you know, we, we obviously are going through accountability every year, and, you know, the kids at those schools, you know, we want them to be successful, and we want them to have every opportunity to, as I know you guys do, so.
I think you know this, Mrs. Tosin, but I think if we can really get traction with this quickly, in just a couple of years, by the time we send a couple of classes of fifth graders through, it'll really help, to help the middle schools that they're moving into in a big way.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you guys again for your work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Burdine.
I also wanted to say thank you very much. I'm really excited about this as well. There's lots of overlap of comments that have already been said that I don't need to go over again, but as Dr. Dupree said, the, the current way of us doing business has not been effective, so obviously we need to change, and I, I feel very excited about this. I wrote down a few words that stuck out. This is bold, it's a comprehensive plan, it's innovative, it's unique, and what I really like, it's an opportunity for teachers that are really working hard to make a considerable amount of money, which I think could actually attract folks that maybe are in industry that do have talent, and that's exciting to me. I have personal experience with that. Another thing I really like is, is teachers are modeling the team approach. Seems like we expect our students to do that, so we can model a team approach. Maybe that could make more sense to them. And in my opinion, I would like to see this as a, as, once again, as a district model, obviously modified for different schools and, and age ranges, but I'm pumped up. So thank you, I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Mr. George.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo on most of our colleagues' comment, and especially I appreciate, Mr. Rosenthal mentioned, I really appreciate your trying in a couple of schools and see how this work. And I see that there is a well-thought-out system in place, and many times we have issues like how do we implement, you know, how do we implement it successfully? And by listening to this plan, I see that there is a, there is a system in place. I have more like comments, and, and I see that the buck stopped at the chief academic officer's desk, and I, I honestly like to see one person in charge of this program. And I understand so many, so many departments part of it, but I really like the fact that one person in charge of that program. And I like the fact that the compensation or, or sign-in bonuses providing, you know, you know, for their more work or more expectation, or expectation of work or more effort, you know, we are trying to somehow compensate them. I really like that factor. And, and like some of other, my colleagues mentioned, I hope you, we will eventually look into, you know, putting this program in place, of course, as we move forward, when we see the success factor in more elementary school and also middle school level, I see that. And, and the most important, exciting factor I have seen is the support system. And I hear many times in the, among the teacher population, not having enough support. And it's not probably for various reasons, but I see that we have a system in place. I, I strongly believe in system, and, and I see that it is well-thought-out, and, and I will be, I'm saying, I'm very excited to see, and I will be watching it very closely and see how things work. And I know that there's a lot of effort behind this, this, is there any district, you know, trying something similar? I know the, the Edge is our trademark, so is anything similar, any district, you know, trying something like this or tried?
I'm not aware of anything this comprehensive. There are portions of another districts, but something that is this elaborate and this comprehensive, trying to address every possible hurdle our students may be experiencing, whether it's at school or in the, you know, at home, just to embrace them and, and take away all hurdles so they can be successful, I'm, I'm not aware of something.
Okay. And so, so we are the pioneers in this, so it looked like. So look forward, definitely look forward for the, the success of this program, and I, I greatly appreciate your effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. I just have a couple of comments, and one is, a couple of things really stood out to me that I really liked, and that was your real emphasis at the start of the school year on the culture and, and, and having a culture shift and a mindset shift and just a fresh, this is, we're doing something different. And I think that's critical to success because if it's a mindset of, well, it's just going to be the same old thing in different packaging, then I think we won't, you won't, there won't be the impact that you're, that we're trying to make. So I think that's exciting and, and a key piece. Another thing I really liked, and some of my colleagues remarked on it, is the, the extra, extra physical activity and getting the kids moving around and not just, as, you know, as we sit here for several hours on Monday nights, we think, gosh, it'd be nice to, you know, have a little recess, run around, swing set out in the parking lot. But, but I say that because really children are, it's, they struggle, they can't, it's, it's all they can do to just have that self-control, and some of them can't have the self-control to stay seated for so long and, and be polite about it. And so that physical activity and spreading that out through the day, and I see that flexibility and moving around to sort of a, more of a fluid environment, I think, is, is exciting. And I also saw, you know, I, I'm, I'm happy about feeding the kids, I'm happy about the snacks and the, and the dinner option, and, and I read a little bit about, you know, how that might work and how parents would opt into that, and I'm sure... And I'm sure you guys were working out all the details on that. But to me, there's so much value in that whole picture so kids aren't struggling with hunger and they're not struggling with homework support and they're not struggling with all the pieces that help them to be a whole child so that they can be successful in learning. So those things were exciting to me. Obviously some tremendous work aligning with our core beliefs and commitment statements. That was very clear in all the information we read and, you know, the tightly-held expectations and all those things. I, it really was, that was exciting to see that alignment. And I, I agree with you, Mr. Burdine, on the team and having our teacher teams work as a team. We call them grade-level teams, but sometimes they don't always seem like grade-level teams at the elementary level and, but when you create that interdependency, then they will be like teams because they'll learn one another's strengths and weaknesses and they'll help each other and, and that, that seems very exciting. So, and Mr. George, you mentioned, and you said it, you maybe didn't use this word, but you said, but what, the word that came to my mind was embedded. It's embedded in the process. The support for the staff is, is embedded in the process and a range of strategies and for students' supports are embedded in the process. And so you can't help but try a lot of different things because it'll be part of the process. So let's not be shy about, about all that. So I think now's the time to give all the people here a round of applause for bringing us. Do we have any other questions? Mr. Rosenthal?
One, one other quick comment. I actually think that, that if this program grows as planned, I think kids are really going to look forward to coming to school every single day because I know I would.
All right. Very well. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Edward. Thank you, Dr. I. Thank you, Dr. Faust, for bringing that information. And Dr. Hill, thanks for taking responsibility and being our chief academic officer and being in charge of this. All right. As I mentioned earlier, we are not doing a budget and development and staffing update. The board will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act for personnel matter to conduct the superintendent's formative evaluation. And I believe that's our last item of business. So thank you all very much. We will now convene in closed session.